Well, for joining us this evening, October 1st, 2024, for this candidate forum for the Encinitas City Council District 1 race. I am Christine Dickens, a member of the League of Women Voters of North County San Diego, and I am your moderator this evening. I'd like to welcome you all and our candidates, Alison Blackwell and Luke Schaefer. I'd also like to acknowledge the League volunteers who are assisting in the background tonight in Zoom host timer and question sorters. None of the League question sorters, the timer nor I live or vote in Encinitas. Many of you have already submitted questions for the candidates, which the question sorters have grouped by topic, eliminating duplicates, those not relevant to the office being sought, and any that are inappropriate. We will also accept questions from you throughout the forum. You can submit your questions by clicking on the Q and A button on your device. We know on a laptop is on the bottom of your screen. We will ask as many questions as time permits. A little about the League. The League was founded in 1920 when women first gained the right to vote. And while our name is the League of Women Voters, don't let that fool you. We welcome anyone who shares in our mission to join us to promote active, informed public participation at all levels of government. I'd also like to emphasize that the League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan. We never endorse or oppose any political party or candidate for public office, although we do sometimes, in a completely separate arm of the League, our advocacy arm, take positions on vital issues. Our guiding principle for candidate forums is to provide a fair and impartial platform for candidates to speak directly to voters and for voters to learn about the candidates' positions and priorities. Now, a brief review of the ground rules, which both candidates have agreed to. Specifically, tonight's event is not a debate. It is an opportunity for candidates to respond to questions from the community and for the public to hear how the candidates would address the issues. Candidates have agreed to focus their answers on their own plans and positions rather than commenting about the other candidates' qualifications, character, or activities. A video recording of this forum will be posted on our YouTube channel within 48 hours. You can find the recording under the News and Events tab on our website, l w v n c s d dot o. No other audio or video recording of this forum is allowed other than that expressly authorized in advance in writing by the League. FCC laws do not permit any editing of the video or use of portions or clips of the recording. Now, let me take a moment to explain the format of the forum. Tonight, we will hear from Alison Blackwell and Luke Schaefer. They are the candidates running for a four-year term in the Office of Encinitas City Council District 1. We will start with two-minute opening statements from each candidate. And the person that's going to go first is candidate Schaefer.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Luke Schaefer, and I am proud to be running for District 1 City Council here in Encinitas. I've lived here for 44 years, and in that time, I've seen the beauty, character, and community spirit that makes this community so great. But I have also seen along that time how our leadership has failed to protect what makes Encinitas unique. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the key issues that are shaping our city's future: overdevelopment, the need for affordable housing, infrastructure changes, public safety, and fiscal responsibility. We're at a crossroads where the decision being made now will affect the character of our neighborhoods for generations to come. I believe it's time to put the residents' voices back at the center of these discussions and make sure that Encinitas grows in the way that benefits everyone and not just developers in special interest. I'm running because I believe I can do better. We can push back against the state mandates with Prop 8, protect our affordable housing, and invest in neglected infrastructure without raising taxes. We can create safer streets and parks while standing up for our community. I look forward to sharing my vision for Encinitas with you tonight and discussing how we can work together to build a future that reflects the values and character of the people who call this city home. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Blackwell?
Kind of always remember the mute button, but thank you again to everyone for attending, especially when we have a Padres game and a vice presidential debate going on at the same time. And thanks to the League for hosting and for Luke Schaefer for being here. So last Sunday, I was at Encinitas Oktoberfest all day, and it was a really beautiful sunny day, and I got to talk to a lot of people. And one conversation in particular really struck me. A resident told me I better fight for Encinitas. He seemed swept up in some of the fighting words being used by other candidates. But for me, the answer to his statement was pretty easy. I will fight for Encinitas because I love the city. I work hard every day as deputy mayor to make a difference for all. I decided to move to Encinitas from Orange County because Rob, my husband of 34 years, and I knew that from the second we crossed into Lucadia from Carlsbad, that this city is magical. We moved here with our kids, Lila and Riley, in 2013, and we call this our forever home. And my love of the city led me to volunteering at city events, serving on city committees, and eventually being quoted to the council in January 2023. I've been impressed at the talented people here in Encinitas who are really, really engaged in the community. I think back to that moment in early 2023 when I applied to the council seat. And my priorities then haven't really changed: improving infrastructure like roads, drainage, safe rail crossings, better fire stations, increasing affordable housing options, addressing homelessness, and protecting our environment and ensuring a healthy coastline. And now, though, I realize how much my background, skills, and values are a great match for the council role. My background as an attorney and business executive in the private sector, and my work on the committee and council has been invaluable. My skills such as problem solving, collaborating to get things done, making hard decisions, and strategic planning. And my values such as listening more than talking, taking a balanced approach, and acting with integrity. I love serving on the city, and yes, I fight to find answers to the city's biggest challenge. The fight, though, is how to get things done through listening to you and collaborating on realistic solutions. Thank you.
Thank you both. We will begin the question and answer segment. Generally, candidates will have up to one minute to respond to each question. I may allow more time for complex questions, or I might insert a speed round where the candidates will be asked to respond to a question with a simple yes or no. I'll let you know if that is my intention. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their time to rebut another candidate's response. Following the questions, each candidate should have one minute for a closing statement. Closing statement. The order in which candidates are speaking has been determined randomly. We rotate the order in which candidates will respond to questions. As you've already seen, we have a timing device. Candidates will receive a one-minute warning, a 30-second warning, and a red stop sign when their time is up. Candidate must wrap up their answers when their time is up, or they will be cut off. So you have one minute for each question. So let's get started. So, Alison, so candidate Blackwell? Housing has already come up, and so I want to give you a question about housing that came in. An old law has been brought forward again, Builders' Remedy, which allows builders to pretty much build anything they want if a city does not comply with state law. Will you comply with state law so this does not happen in Encinitas?
Yes, absolutely. I think it took a lot of work to get a compliant housing element that were in the sixth cycle from 2021 to 2029. And if we weren't to kind of stay in compliance, we would have a very short period of time in which we would have to find new parcels to upzone. We're talking like six months or less. That would be very, very difficult to do. If we don't do that, which many cities have failed to do, then Builders' Remedy could kick in, and it's now enacted as part of the Housing Accountability Act. So I think it's critical because Builders' Remedy allows builders to come in and pretty much bypass a lot of what we think is important, even about our objective design standards and other local control measures. And so I will do a lot to make sure we stay in compliance and prevent Builders' Remedy from ever kicking in.
Candidate Schaefer?
Thank you. To me, it seems like Builders' Remedy is already here, and the developers are already winning at what they want. You can look at the Goods and Project down there on Ransfield Road. It already has issues before it's even in the middle of being developed, let alone being finished. There's already traffic on that street. And when that happened, we were not sued by the state. We were not sued by the city. We were threatened a lawsuit and reversed that moment. We are in compliance with our affordable housing. We've never been out of compliance. So currently, the city has voted down Measure T initially and then Measure U back in 2018. And the voters have spoken that they want this to go away. Now, that being said, there are ways to work and make sure that the developer isn't the only one getting the benefits from waivers, concessions, incentives. We have a way forward. The best way forward is to work and contract and work and bargain with the developers themselves.
We're also going to stay with candidate Schaefer for the next question. The city has infrastructure projects in need of funding. What are your top three priorities and your ideas for funding specific to District 1?
The top three priorities are absolutely got to be the pavement. Our asphalt has weathered much longer. The current city council has dropped the budget this year to zero. Two years ago, it was $250,000. Last year was $500,000. It's currently zero. So our pavement is in a decline, a steady decline for the last 10 years, and the council hasn't done anything about it yet. They've prioritized vanity projects and whatnot. The very close second is going to be our drainage and making sure that our drainage is taken care of once and for all. We're living on 50- to 60-year-old pipes, corrugated metal. That is not just rusting out, but once it collapsed, the cost now doubles. We're looking at $51 million over the course of 10 years. So that's a priority. And then another big one I consider is safety and health is the train blast and getting at rail crossings there in Lucadia at the north end of Lucadia Boulevard.
Alison, candidate Blackwell?
Yes, I think Mr. Schaefer and I are pretty aligned on some of those top priorities. I would, though, point out that he is not correct about pavement budget being zero. I was part of the council approving the budget, and we devote about $4 million a year. I did, along with at least one other council member, ask to use some unallocated general fund budget to improve that, increase that budget even more, but we did not have a majority to do that. But, you know, is $4 million a year enough? It is not. I also agree with the drainage. That's super important. In this year's budget, we managed to find some additional to put in some more 60-inch pipe or 60-foot pipe that goes all the way down to Jupiter. And we had to do that by deferring some other projects, but it was important to do. And then finally, Accra Crossing and Quiet Zone, incredibly important. It's probably one of the issues that pulled me into working with the city. I live in Lucadia, and it's incredibly important to have safe rail crossings.
We have more housing questions. And Alison, you'll be, sorry, candidate Blackwell, you'll be starting. Senate Bill 9 was signed into law three years ago. The law allows homeowners to create up to four homes on existing parcel, in effect eliminating single-family only zoning. What specifically is your opinion of SB 9?
SB 9 is the law. We are a general law city, and so state law in this case does apply. I believe it just allows a lot split, so I think if you are to include an ADU, then yes, you could probably get four units on a single parcel. But I think, you know, again, we can put into place some standards to make sure that objective design standards are followed and that all other parts of our process are followed. But SB 9 is the law, and as a general law city, we need to follow it.
And I agree. SB 9 is a general law, and we do need to follow it. Like Black, sorry, candidate Blackwell said, we do need to follow the rules and regulations, but just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. And so meeting our requirement on affordable housing and allowing homeowners to do what they so wish, as you can see in many parts of Lucadia on the west side of 101, where there used to be large lots, again, having been a lifelong resident here since the time I was born, you can really see that that impact heading east is only going to increase. Already congested roads, already congested traffic lights, already congested everything. So if we can find ways to help people not want to do that, or if people can choose not to do that, I would appreciate that, and that's something that I would like to assert encourage and find ways for the affordable housing to make its way forward without the requirement of those ADUs.
As moderator, we have another lengthy question about housing. So I'd like to give you each a minute and a half instead of a minute because they're complex questions. So the first part is how will you navigate meeting the state's new housing requirements while retaining the character of our city? And will you oppose development that meets state housing mandates? If so, and the city is sued by the state and loses the lawsuit, as has happened in the past, how do you propose losses be paid for? For a minute and a half.
In correction, we were never sued by the state, so the question is wrong. We were never sued by the state. So I just wanted to confirm that we have never been sued by the state. Just want to make sure that you're not implying that we've been sued by the state.
Thank you. Thank you. So perhaps the question can address if Encinitas wants to fight to go into litigation, how would that be paid for?
Am I first? Okay, so the the fact of the matter is, is there's been cities like Redondo Beach and Hermosa Beach that have fought this, and actually just one. There's been four other cities that have done it as well. And we're sitting at a point where if we combine together and we have the political will sitting on the dais that represents the city that, again, voted down Measure T and U and then was sued by the mayor at the time to overturn that. I believe if we partner together with those cities along with county-level support, I see that we are successful, like the other cities that have already been successful against the state as of recent. We find ourselves at a crossroads where, again, these affordable housings are unfunded. There was a time when there was a subsidy that came from the state about 15 years ago. That subsidy no longer comes. Currently, if we were to use L7, we'd be paying almost $600,000 per unit for 45 units there. $600,000 by the city, meaning that what used to be the state subsidy now comes from the city. So if we keep allowing this to happen, we are not going to have a budget left to spend on anything because it will be predominantly built or spent on the affordable housing requirement for us to subsidize what the state used to do prior to our current situation.
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure how L7 and the cost of what it would take to build it comes into play here, but I think the question really has to do with how we navigate the state's laws and different requirements. And, you know, the state has a lot of laws on housing, 60 this year. I think the governor has signed over 20 so far this year. And many of those are enacted to address this housing shortage, which a lot of people feel, right? There is not enough housing supply to meet the demand. And builders didn't keep up with the population growth of the housing crisis back in 2008. I think these laws can feel really oppressive to the city and our city, all cities. And I understand the state's goal, but I don't always agree with its approach. And so I respect the law, but we need to work to change the law. And I don't think taking on Sacramento or suing to try to change the law or prevail is a winning strategy. I think that's a losing strategy. It costs a lot of money. And Mr. Schaefer pointed out that Redondo Beach was successful in its SB 9 lawsuit. However, it's a charter city, so it is a very narrow decision based on charter city and laws that apply to a charter city. As I mentioned, we're a general law city, so it really doesn't apply to us at all. So I think what we should do is, you know, again, try to, you know, work with other cities to raise our voice about local housing laws. In fact, our city did write many letters in opposition to laws that were emerging this year, and we should continue to do more of that. And I'm at stop, so I'll wrap that question.
Being within the timeframes, appreciate it. Okay, candidate Blackwell? Back to the one minute. Do you think Encinitas is a safe city? Why or why not?
Yes, I do. It's one of the safest cities in our region. And, you know, we do work with the Sheriff's Department very closely. We have a good partnership with the Sheriff's Department. That's not to say there's not crime. In fact, we know some of the crime has gone up in certain areas. For example, crimes against person has gone up year over year from 2023 to 2024, year-to-date. But when you peel that back, you realize it's not what it appears. In fact, a large majority of that is between people who know each other. And I think the city doesn't really have much power to enforce what goes on behind people's doors and walls. So overall, though, our city is very safe. We have a great Sheriff's Department. We have good partnership. And frankly, the Sheriff's Department is doing a really good job now of listening to the community.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe our city is safe. I believe that it is a growing crime problem. Right now, the current, I think the majority of a lot of the crime is coming from a homeless population that is committing crime. Being homeless is not a crime, but committing crime is a crime. And allowing that to happen and allowing that to continue with, we are about four deputies understaffed per capita. And to bring that back and support the sheriff to bring more deputies into our town is something that I'd 100% back. Security and safety is my background. I've spent over 15 years in the United States Marine Corps developing, helping, and doing this for our nation, along with training over 700 Iraqi police officers in Iraq on my first deployment there. I want to recorrect something that when we fight the state on the housing, on the requirement, it's not going to cost money. It's going to cost uniting with other cities and other groups like Catalyst, our neighborhood voices, Livable California, and a couple of other 45 other cities that are doing this. So there are ways to fight this without costing the money.
I think I answered the question.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I was listening. Okay, so what will you do to make this a more pedestrian-friendly city and help with the 101 traffic? And, I mean, sorry, candidate Schaefer, you start.
Well, again, going back to the current council, in what world of common sense does it make sense to take away car lanes, add bike lanes to help traffic, especially when we're trying to add 2,500 extra units to our town? It doesn't. So the fact of the matter is, is I've never believed that putting kids, the predominant users of e-bikes in our town, probably upwards of 85 to 90%, are kids under the age of 16. They do not belong in lanes co-joined with a car. A human body will never survive an accident of a car upwards of, you know, some of these cars upwards of 6,000 pounds, and it's just devastating to see that. Now, as far as the traffic, talking to one of the traffic engineers in a neighboring city is, it's a lot to do with the lights. There's ways to do it. You would see a Jimmy Durante at Villa de la Vaya during the fairgrounds. There are solutions here to get the lights more effective and start to help our mobility. That is one of my pet projects, other than safety, infrastructure, and transparency.
Thank you. Candidate Blackwell?
Yes, I think we do need to make some of our roads more pedestrian-friendly. I think there is some good examples on the 101, though. And I know Mr. Schaefer thinks taking away car lanes is disastrous, but actually, that we've had requests to really make sure we slow the traffic down. And sometimes, like taking a car lane and making it available to pedestrians and bikes, you are actually slowing the traffic down and making it safer for everyone, cars, bikes, and pedestrians. So I do think that's actually a wise thing to do. And the slower people go on our streets, which aren't really highways, they're just streets. And the slower people go, the less likely we will have collisions that can injure people. He made a comment about e-bikes. I mean, e-bikes are here, and they're not just young people riding them. We do need to make sure we're doing a lot of education enforcement, making sure our roads are safe for all e-bike riders and cyclists, and especially with the younger ones. But, you know, I think it is okay to imagine roads where everybody can coexist on the road.
Again, candidate Blackwell, what specifically is your position regarding off-street parking requirements for residential units?
This is one of those state laws that I really struggle with. The state does not require, in my opinion, adequate parking for multifamily housing and/or even any development. And so what we have as a city is we have to help people figure that out because people are not abandoning their cars and jumping on bikes or walking all the time. We know that. But I think the reality is, I've been working with several of the groups who already have permit parking zones to go in and revise our permit parking policy so that where we do have congestion and traffic in parking, excuse me, we can really take a better approach that makes it manageable for people and make sure that those residents who are already there before a new development comes in still enjoy a good quality of life.
Candidate Schaefer?
Thank you. Real quick, there's a contradiction of terms or of understanding here. So when we talk about trying to manage the parking, specifically talking about the developers, allowing these developments to come in and not put enough parking. One of the reasons I got involved was the property going direct above my house, 2.5 acres, 149 units, one-car parking garage, and only 11 guest parking spots for 149 units, three-bedroom units. That's unacceptable. So when you talk about working with the developers to mandate that they put more into this, it's an absolute imperative. So you're talking about not being able to work with the parking and figure out the parking. Well, how about we get people parking on-site where they live? Jesus is Lord. They didn't build enough parking for every unit. $250 for a closed garage and $100 for an open parking. It's unacceptable that they're not going to put enough parking on the brand-new build for 100% of the units. Going back to slowing traffic, when you have thoroughfares, i.e. 101, the five in El Camino, and you're taking lanes away, a fact of the matter is, is people will speed up on the off-streets to make up for the time lost on the thoroughfares that they expect to get to where they want to go. Period.
Thank you. And still with you, candidate Schaefer, what are your plans to address the flooding in Lucadia Boulevard and La Costa?
Again, this has been going on for well over, you know, 50 years with regards to those pipes are now that aged. We have issues every season and every single, again, our current mayor has been on the staff there for 12 years and has himself said this is not a priority. It's an absolute priority. It's a safety requirement along with a health hazard for many residents and our children at Polacki School, where floods regularly. Spoke to a resident down in Lucadia who basically every season had to pay basically somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 for one of his garages that ends up flooded. It is an absolute priority over the streetscape that, again, might look pretty, might bring a couple more spenders, but really, a waste of our money when it's already above $50 million, which is right at the cost of what it would do for our drainage there in Lucadia. It's actually at $51 million. We're currently at $50 million for the streetscape, and there's probably another $20 to $25 million, depending on requirements, headed that direction. So we're sitting with the council that has allowed this to happen routinely and actually signed off on it and voted for it.
Yes, I mean, I think what the misnomer is, the streetscape is just a pretty surface-level project. It's not. In fact, Segment C, which is currently underway, has a lot of drainage going into it. It's got drain inlets. It's got laterals. It has other things. The curbing and sidewalks, frankly, will help. the curbing and sidewalks, but frankly, will help with, uh, drainage. We also have that substantial pipe going in that's, you know, we did get some federal money and the, and the mayor and the council worked hard to, to find other money within our budget, which was very difficult to do, um, to extend that. And we're making progress, but there is still a lot, about another fifty-one million dollars to go just for the one-on-one and Vulcan drainage projects. And that is going to be very difficult to do in each budget year, nearly impossible. So we've got to figure out different ways to approach this and get after these aging infrastructure needs that have been around for decades. It's very hard to hang this on one single mayor.
Thank you, candidate Blackwell, and you will also be starting with this question. Why should we vote yes or no on Measure K, the proposed one-cent sales tax?
I think I just made a case for it, right? It's really intended for infrastructure. We had an afford, we had an infrastructure task force that met for over a year. There are residents in our community who are experts in these areas. They came up with a prioritized list and it was nearly a billion dollars. When you pare that down, just the backlog alone is two hundred million dollars. How are we going to get after that? Um, the council knows this is a priority. Um, and I know there is concern that the money will go into some general fund and get lost and spent on vanity projects. I cannot believe people under, you know, believe that because this council is really committed to using that prioritized list and following through on what that task force, uh, advised us to do. We've got projects, we know where to go directionally. That list is very helpful. I think when we need to figure out how to raise the money through the ballot measure and spend it wisely on those projects using that list.
Okay, though, uh, though, um, Ms. Blackwell is a very pleasant lady. I think that she's wrong and I think some of her life al- altitude does not allow her to see what's happening here. She just talked about drainage. She's talking about the, the drainage at the, at the sidewalks, this and that. The fact of the matter is, is the, the drains are being held up from pipes that are only twelve inches way down the line. So the rain that we're having, this isn't just a small rain. These are talking about hundred-year rains where we're going to have backup. So those, that little drain there doesn't have a, anywhere to go down and that's what backs it up. So you talk about the, the Measure K, the fact of the matter is, is I'm all for Measure K if the city council would be willing to tab those costs. But the problem, the reason they won't do it is because it requires a sixty-six percent vote, a two-thirds vote to pass it. So if you're going to tell me it's for infrastructure and you're going to tell me it's for the fire, that I went to school, I went to preschool with, with two of these guys. I, I'm all about it, but you're not going to sit there and, and tell us about it because you're not, you don't know what you're going to do with it yet. And the fact of the matter is that more than likely, we'll end up somewhere else, like, just like it has with many other projects. Like the turnaround of Higia.
I just want to remind listeners that they can submit questions using that little Q and A button on the bottom of their laptops. If they would like to submit any questions, we're still welcoming questions for the candidates. Thank you. So what, so let's see, so this is back to you, candidate Schaefer. What are the environmental concerns that you feel we have in Encinitas and what solutions do you propose?
Um, the fact of the matter is, is probably not many people in this city that use it more. Since I've been home in two thousand eighteen, um, again, I was gone and back again multiple times. I moved twenty-two times over fifteen years. And the fact of the matter is, is coming back here is one of my favorite places. I spend at least a hundred and fifty days a year in the ocean. Um, there are solution after solution, one primary solution down in Lucadia and on the bluff to help, help our bluffs. The sand that came all the way up to beacons didn't go far enough to actually mitigate the problems at the further, the, the most damaging portion of our bluff from beacons all the way up to Ponto. We have the ability to do it. There's ways to get the wa, the sand that normally comes onto our beaches comes from our lagoons. That's how it was designed before we put roads, railways and whatnot in the way. So when that, when they're dredging that on a more yearly basis, we should be using that to replenish the sand on the bluff there along with, uh, erodible berms, which I know it sounds erodible, but they last for thirty-ish years up there in beacons and whatnot to, to minimize people like my friends from, from having issues of, of not being here anymore because the cliffs are falling on them. So I, I hold it at the highest level of value.
Oops, I think you, were you saying something else?
Christine? No, no, I was turning it back to you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Schaefer on that. Um, having sand on our beaches helps us have a sustainable coastline. And the coastal commission didn't allow us to go really further past beacons with the sand replenishment project. But I'm glad we got it as far, uh, north as we did. We need to work now to get it further north, all the way up through, up to Ponto. We do have some programs that are not dependent on huge federal and state funding. They will give us some, um, short-term relief and we're working hard, um, with our city staff on those. Uh, the SCOOP program is one and working with Carlsbad on their Bataquitos dredging. I would say, though, there are other environmental priorities in addition to that, you know? Um, having clean air and reducing our greenhouse gas emissions is important. Our climate action plan is bar none, one of the best around in the region. And I also think what we've done in a short period of time with organics recycling is really, really impressive. And so I think keeping these things, um, high priorities and educating and especially getting into the schools has been really helpful to educate a new generation on how they can be great environmental citizens.
Thank you. I, at this point, I would like to remind the candidates to focus on their answers and, and on their own positions uh, as opposed to commenting on the other candidates' positions. So Encinitas, back to the questions, Encinitas has a strong arts community. What will you do to ensure that the city's budget continues to provide art resources for all ages? And we're starting with candidate Blackwell.
You know, I'm very happy with, uh, the culture of arts, uh, and, and really across all ages in Encinitas. We've done a lot so far. We do have an arts commission. We've just opened Pacific View, which although some point to it as a vanity project, is a really impressive art center. And the enrollment in the classes for the first round has been really impressive. We've done that, um, by not really increasing much staff to run that center. We've done it by moving some staff to the center as their, as their home base. Um, I also think, you know, we have great programming in general. We, we fund that every year. Um, and as I mentioned, great, uh, participation. And we're also looking at, uh, getting a designation as a cultural arts district as part of the cultural, uh, tourism committee, which I'm, I belong on. Um, and we support the, um, one-on-one Main Street associations that sponsor events like, um, the different art walks and Lucadia Art Walk. So I feel like we do a lot as a city to keep our, our culture of arts alive and we should keep doing more.
Candidate Schaefer?
Yes, um, I believe the arts are absolutely important. I do, going back to kind of the budget kind of crossover here, it kind of shows with Pacific View. Again, I played at Pacific View. I have many friends that went there. I, I played basketball there, uh, countless times. Uh, before, when you weren't able to skateboard there, we skateboarded there all the time. It was when we were kids type thing. I think it's a great, now that it's done, the fact of the matter is we spent twenty mil, it'll be twenty million dollars when it's all said and done. And so when somebody's sitting, sitting here, and again, I'm not talking negatively about my, my opponent. I'm talking about the entire council at this point. It hasn't gotten done to the point where the biggest benefit and art of living in this town is this town. You go back to what's going on with, again, with our affordable housing task force, talking about possibly getting rid of Swamis as a possible site for more affordable housing. That, to me, is absurd. When Yoganada came here, he knew this place was gorgeous and beautiful. And as more than that, there's an energy that exists here and I've been here my whole life and understand that that's important. So when you, the, the, the wealthiest person on the beach is the person on the beach. It doesn't matter what you drive there and, or drive away in. Just being on the beach is our, is, is a, is a part of our ability. So the art is what it is. Um, and I think that we have more to go and there's, the schools provide a phenomenal job in doing so.
I also want to remind you that there is a timer and, um, you're asked to stop after your time. So the next question is, what concrete steps, and this is back to you, candidate Schaefer, what concrete steps would you take to see the quiet zone finally come to fruition?
With regards to the quiet zone, there's a, uh, 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 a grant that we've missed as of this year, but it'll come up again next year, August of next year, or sorry, October of next year. Um, that would give us about the six million dollars that we would require to, uh, get the upgrade crossing, which would also allow at the same time the quiet zones to be put in. And now those two come hand in hand. So with one grant and a little bit of a budget, we could find ourselves at a spot where we have the upgrade crossings and at the same time, the quiet zones that are necessary in our, in our town. Um, and that's, those are the steps I would take. Finishing off on the art question, I believe everything that we're doing in our town, the fact of the matter is, is about ninety percent of the classes that are afforded at the art center are available at Miracosta. And that's important to point out because again, is I would love to have everything in the world. And since we live here at the top of the world, we're kind of used to always having our way, but we can't always have all of it, although at the, at the time, at the same time. We have to take priorities and we have to put the first things first.
Hey, I'm not sure how Pacific View, uh, came up into the quiet zone question, but let me respond to it. Um, the concrete
Just responding to the former questions since I had extra time.
Okay, thanks for interrupting. Um, uh, the, the question, the concrete steps about quiet zone. Um, I agree, the grants is an important thing and we are, we have just, uh, in process of applying for grants. The quiet zone itself is listed as number forty-one on the infrastructure task force list of those projects for infrastructure. I'd like to see us invest if, uh, Measure K passes and the voters tell us they want that, then I think we should use funds towards those projects and being, uh, number forty-one is feasible that we could fund it. If we don't get that kind of new revenue, then I think we have to look at what we can do within the budget. It may mean breaking it into phases to see what we can do immediately and then over time each budget year. But I'm committed to doing it. It's really important to do for the city. I live close to the railroad. Um, and it's really, really, uh, noisy and disruptive for people to have, uh, the horns blaring all the time. And of course, safer crossings is part of it, but the quiet zone is citywide.
Yeah. Okay, and still with you, candidate Blackwell. The planning commission has approved the Melba project, which will require extensive tree removal. What is your position on this project?
I know it would be tempting for me to answer that, um, but I really shouldn't because it will likely be appealed and come before the council and then I would have a conflict. I don't want to make that an out. I would love to engage in discussion, but I don't think this is the right forum to do that. I will go back to the Affordable Housing Task Force since I have a couple, uh, seconds left here. I did initiate that to find better solutions than using some of our city-owned open space for affordable housing. We did from, take the task force, um, recommendations of what to look at. We also looked at faith-based properties where they had been, there had been some talk of the, the faith-based organization being willing to use some land. People look at the self-realization fellowship and think of the traditional Swami parcel, but they actually have quite a few parcels in town. So I think it was appropriate to look at some of those. I don't think it's going to rise to the top of the list and clearly, if they don't want to engage, it certainly will not. But it, it, it is a misnomer to say that we were, this task force is trying to get rid of Swamis.
Uh, as far as Melba and what's going on, um, I don't think the city has a, a bigger, a big enough plan to visualize to twenty fifty and give us a better va- value of where we're going. Instead of logging in and finding out that there's, there's Santa Fe that's already cost three million dollars and we're talking about, you know, two-thirds of what's already at fifty million dollars, which would have been our drainage, is we need a bigger project, a bigger understanding in high-level decisions and governmental level, high-level government decisions. You have a couple of decisions that help all the small decisions make sense. And right now, we're piecemealing this together. Going back to real quick on, on the, the rebuttal to the Affordable Housing Task Force, it's not just the religious locations. It's Saint John, well, it's Saint John's, it's Saint Andrews, it's the Beach Chapel, it's also other parks. It's Oak Crest Park that's got twenty-one acres. It's frickin' Orpheus Park, that's three point one four acres right there in, um, Lucadia. Cottonwood Creek is at risk, which is just kind of put in, you know, relatively new. Oak Crest Middle School, Miracosta Campus. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you for inviting by the time and candidate Schaefer. Okay, so this is for you, candidate Schaefer. If the sales tax doesn't pass, how do you propose we will pay for these infrastructure projects?
Again, it's in our budget. We've, over the course of the last ten years, we've already spent the fifty million dollars towards projects such as, uh, like Pacific View. Again, I love the project. I went there. I have a lot of friends that went there. I would love to keep the school forever. The fact of the matter is, is that, that cost us a lot of money and decisions. And that's what we're really talking about here tonight. It's not really about what were happening here and what's happening here. Cause after November fifth and, and decisions are made, whoever's up there is going to be the one that's taking on the brunt of it. As you talk to a lot of people, not everybody knows what's going on in town. But the decisions that keep, that are kept being, are keep being made, i.e. putting things on the list of affordable housing just to take it off? When we're talking about an L-seven property that was bought with, by, with park funds and it's called the Pyrrhaes, sorry, the, uh, uh, Quail Gardens Park? Those are, those are the decisions that keep coming up, which is why I got involved in the first place. Again, leadership is my background. What I see up there on the dais, I see it missing. And that's why I'm getting involved to try to actually make leadership-type decisions.
Okay, so if the sales tax ballot measure does not pass, we will have to approach this with a lot of trade-offs in the existing budget. There are no new major projects that are going to occupy our budget. It budget's pretty simple and it's very transparent. A lot of our budget goes to public safety. The two biggest pieces of our budget go to fire and marine safety and law enforcement. It would be difficult to, uh, start to chip away at those. Um, because I think, you know, we do need to bolster both. Um, and we might be short deputies and it would be better to have more there, not less. Where can we find other trade-offs to fund it? We're just going to have to do it the way we've been doing it. For drainage, we had to stop the Higia, Lucadia Boulevard Roundabout. Very painful decision, very painful decision. Yet we had to make that tough decision to get more of the sixty-inch pipe into the ground going to, um, La Costa. And so critical that we make those trade-off decisions. They won't be easy, but we'll have to do it if the sales tax measure does not pass.
Hello, I want to say that my computer dropped me off again, so I'm a little bit readjusting here and getting the, getting re-seated somewhere else. And so here we are. And, okay, so both of you have answered the sales tax question, correct? Yes, okay, thank you. There are, okay, again, for you, um, candidate Blackwell, there are many unique op- opinions about what creates strong community character. What elements do you consider create strong community character?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, I, I think back on the general plan and there's some great language in the general plan where it talks about the city's variety of housing, opportunities, rich natural setting, small-town atmosphere, pleasant climate, other amenities. Um, and you know, that's a great definition of community character. I think, though, people sometimes describe community character a- as the time when they arrived here. Right? They may not have been here at the time the general plan was, uh, enacted or amended, but they think about it at the first point in time. But for me personally, it's really about having that mix of housing, of businesses, of people, of having a great culture of arts and surfing and skating. And, um, you know, I think what we have to do is also make sure we're protecting our, our community character. Many talk about it, but we haven't seen much action. And I would say I have put forward with council member Joey Lyons, uh, a new measure to consider for next budget, which is about doing historic districts to preserve some of that.
Thank you. Okay, and, okay, so candidate Schaefer?
Yes, the simple answer is humans, right? People. Humanity is what makes, is what makes the character. Uh, that's one of the, my, my major givebacks. I was a football coach last year, a volunteer football coach. I'm still the head JV lacrosse coach at La Costa Canyon, getting into the kids' lives and helping pass on some of the, that information. Uh, again, surfing, skating, I do it routinely. Um, it's, it's one of those things that people come here to do and it's a part of who they are. It's part of what they bring with them when they come here. I would never say that I'm going to go to Minnesota or somewhere else and try to say that within ten years, I know the community of that character. Uh, the, the character of that community. Just because I go skiing for a, a weekend doesn't mean I know what this place is about. Living here and seeing and knowing, actually knowing the individuals that live. Yeah, between myself and a couple of the other candidates currently, we probably are one one degree of separation from every single member of our community. And just to make sure that we understand this, it Encinitas has lost twenty three hundred residents in the last six six years. We are down residents. We are not up residents. Housing is not that issue.
Thank you. Okay. So again, to you, candidate Shaffer, what areas of Encinitas would be good options for affordable housing?
I believe that a deeper dive into some of the already trafficked areas, meaning again, growing up in El Camino, again, I'm not sure when Allison got here, but AMC used to be on El Camino and I know that down or around there are places to put more affordable housing where people, again, I know people aren't going to work down below, but there might be a ability to play, quote unquote, play down below, like restaurants, like grocery shopping. So the traffic on the weekend days and after work could be would subside due to better locations such as, you know, an El Camino real location. I don't believe the state should be the ones providing majority of the funding because that will come with a leash with it that requires more requirements. So I think enhancing the developers and talking with some of the developers about working with the existing locations would be an absolute benefit to El Camino and to all the businesses on El Camino, plus the businesses coming in because of the additional location.
Thank you. Candidate Blackwell?
Yes, you know, it's been good to work on the Affordable Housing Task Force because we are looking at it more deeply at a lot of the properties the city owns, among others. I I think El Camino Real is a great area. I think we're to be careful that it doesn't get overbuilt, but some of the new laws from the state on mixed use development, it could very well be used by developers to build something quite nice. And now that we have the specific plan, it'll make sure that it's not charmless, but that it gets built with some good character, some good charm. I also think we can look again at Public Works Yard. The city does own that. We have a very difficult question about where to move the equipment and but there there are some possibilities and we're looking at those right now. And then finally, City Hall and even the transit station. It would be great to have people located near public transportation, near services and retail. And all those locations I mentioned accomplish that. So I think those are better locations than some of the others we've had to use for affordable housing.
Thank you. So we're ready to move on to closing comments. But before we do, I'd like to thank the candidates for agreeing to be here tonight and the audience for your thoughtful questions and for coming tonight to learn more about candidates seeking to represent you. I'd also like to thank the league members who helped who volunteered to help this forum. Our democracy, our democracy depends on people willing to serve and people willing to become informed and to exercise their right to vote. We like to remind people that democracy is not a spectator sport. So thank you for getting in the game. I know if this was an in person event, there'd be a big round of applause for for the candidates and for the people participating. There are a few announcements that we're we'd like to make before the closing statements. We have the following upcoming voter service events that we have on our shared screen. There's a pros and cons event on on October fifth. And those those are very popular because they allow you to learn about propositions in a way that's unbiased and objective. We also have a candidate forum for the forty ninth congressional district with Mike Levin and Matt Booterson, as well as a San de Cuido Union High School District candidate forum with Mike Allman and Kevin Sabilico on October fifteenth. We hope to see you at some of these forums. Also, we want to let you know that the register of voters will begin mailing ballots to all active registered voters beginning around October fifth. Lastly, if you'd like to help us in our mission to make democracy work for everyone, we encourage you to become a member or support us with a donation of any amount. It's easy to do. Visit our website at LWVNCSD.org. On the closing comments by the candidates, they have took one minute to share their final thoughts with you. We will begin in reverse order of the opening statements, so I believe that makes candidate Blackwell first to do the closing statement.
Great, thank you. Well, I am the right person for Encinitas City Council District Lana and I would love to continue to serve all of you. My opponent talks about SAT. He talks about sensibility, accountability, transparency, but I don't think he's being sensible, accountable, or transparent with you, the voters. It's too easy to throw up campaign promises, but very hard to deliver action. And I've proven that I can deliver. I respect our community character. I appreciate our city's past, where we are today, and I have a great vision for the bright future. I'm also great at listening to you and collaborating on realistic solutions and putting things into action. And I'm ready on day one. So I will work incredibly hard for the people of Encinitas and that's why I'm the clear choice for your vote on November fifth. Thank you very much for your support, for the league for hosting this and for Mr. Schaefer for participating.
And thank you, Allison, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. Fact of the matter is, is the town is currently unsat and that's again why I got involved in the first place. Again, I have three kids, I'm a volunteer coach for two different sports. This is absolutely an extra thing, but I also have a bias for action. And after coming down to City Hall to watch the the council, the planning commission and then the council ignore the residents in this situation. It just dawned on me that we are lacking and if I don't get involved or somebody doesn't get involved. And I'm not one of those people that's going to sit there and say that somebody else should do it. So if if somebody else is going to do it, then I I should be willing to stand up and do it and that's what it's about. So really, it's not about all these things we talked about tonight. It's about where we go from here. It's about somebody that has that bias for action that can learn quick, fast and ha and a hurry and make sure that we take action to hold our town right where it is, where we wanted to go, in the way that we want to go and not let the county or the state come in and tell us how we're going to do it. That is absolutely absurd and that's why we incorporated in the first place. So again, I thank you all for being here tonight and I appreciate your time. If you want change, if you want the ability to move forward in that direction, I'd be your person. Thank you so much.
A final thank you to our audience for asking such great questions. And I want to thank and commend the candidates for their courage and willingness to run for public office. So we we'd like to show the slide that shows the several trusted resources for nonpartisan accurate information. There it is. Oh, that's the upcoming one down. There it is. If you'd like more information on any election related issue, one of these sites is sure to have reliable information. We know you'll be voting in this election. We ask you to encourage your family, friends and neighbors to vote as well. Thank you all and good night.
Thank you.